Well, he appealed to override it. They did not override it. They stuck with your recommendation. He asked. Counsel supports your case.
I just wondered if we had messed up.
No, 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 no. It's fine to override.
Victor Hyland, Director of planning and zoning.
Good evening and welcome to the August 20th, 2024 City of Kankey Planning Board Meeting. I will call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Barry McCracken.
Here.
Susan Lopez.
Here.
Deb Terrell.
Here.
Chip Roarum.
Here.
Jose Arturo Barajas.
Here.
Beverly Hood.
Here.
Arthur Lacks, not here. We do have a quorum.
Thank you.
Steve.
Oh, Steve, Steve Case, sorry. Thank you, Steve.
Approval amendments for July 16, 2024. Are there any corrections, changes, or comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and file them. Communications?
Um, nothing.
City Council actions?
So, a while back, we had the Prairie Walk case where we were annexing some property and amending zoning, and I'll look at a couple of variances. That one is going to require an agreement with the property owner because the city needs to work on some streets and we need to coordinate the timing of the development. We had a good meeting with the property owner last week and still are negotiating with him on that. Once that negotiation is resolved, an agreement will be written and the zonings will be taken with that agreement to City Council. So, I would guess, optimistically, next month, probably October for that. We had the PB 2024-4-2, that was the wine bar at 810 West Station. They did, the City Council did approve that at their August 5th meeting. We also had the map amendment from R1 to R3 for the property at 831 South Washington Avenue. The City Council did approve that as well. We are working with the property owner to address the parking issues that we discussed at the last meeting. The city does not want to sell the lot to the north to them, but at least conceptually would be amenable to allowing them to use part of that for parking, provided that he pays part of it and we work out some type of a mutual agreement. So, that's to be determined, but we're working on providing a solution for that. Regarding QuickTrip, they did approve the conditional use for the billboard that you guys addressed last month, and we have the plat on your agenda for this evening. The remaining item will be a site plan that needs to be reviewed and approved. Then, we had the map amendment for changing the zoning from R1 to R2 for the two small lots at 553 and 554 East Bourbon A Street. You guys recommended the rezoning. The council did approve that. He appealed your denial of his variance from parking and lot area requirements because he still wanted to keep those as two units. City Council affirmed your decision, so they denied his appeal essentially. So, they stuck with what you guys recommended, so no change there. Just so you guys understand the way it works, though, he did have valid rental licenses up until a few months ago, so it hasn't been vacant for more than a year. So, he will still be able to continue to use him as two units until something happens to that structure. But he still has to provide the parking, so that's what he's got to figure out. But potentially, he can continue to use him as two. And that is it for the City Council actions.
Thank you. Before I move any further, I want to introduce Melissa King, who's sitting here with me this evening. She's the Director of Planning and Zoning. Let's give her a warm welcome. Case PB 2040-7-1, public hearing for used car sales lot at 490 West Station Street by a head start, Steve Allen. And as has been noted, that this case will be continued. However, I would like to open up the public hearing in the event there's someone here this evening that would like to speak on this case.
And just for clarity, Madam Chair, the applicant didn't get all of his notifications done 10 days in advance of the hearing, so that's why we're going to continue it to next month.
Seeing that there is none, we'll go ahead and vote for continuing this case.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we continue case PB 2024-7-1 until next month.
We have a motion by Deb Terrell.
Second.
Second by Barry McCracken. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Steve Case.
Yes.
Susan Lopez.
Yes.
Chip Roarum.
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
Okay, it is continued to next month at your regular meeting.
Case PB 2024-7-2, public hearing for a map amendment to rezone 410 North Indiana Avenue, 429 East Locust Street, and 443 East Locust Street from C2 Service Commercial to R2 Two Family Residential, and a major variance from the front yard setback requirement for a single dwelling use in the R2 District for 433 East Locust. Will the applicant for this case please come forward?
Well, the city is mostly the applicant on this one, so I will take it.
Okay, Mr. Ruiz.
So, we did, we did get an application for the gentleman that owns this lot here adjacent to the alley, and when looking at it, the same condition applies to the two homes immediately adjacent to it, so we kind of partnered with them essentially, and the city handled the notifications for the application. So, we're talking about these three lots here that are all currently zoned commercial, but they are all single-family homes. The homes have been there for quite a number of years, over 50, I don't remember exactly how many, but all three of them are pretty small lots. They range in size from 2,000 square feet to 4,500 square feet. Because of that small lot size, we are proposing that they be rezoned to C2, not to be two family, but as you recall, when we updated the code, we reconfigured R2 to say, "Single Family" on anything essentially less than 6,000 square feet, or 6,000 or more, then you can have that additional unit in the R2 zoning category. And so, these are all single-family homes that we're suggesting to be rezoned to R2. I know that the Mr. Sierra has made some improvements on the property. The home has been improved a little bit and is looking pretty good. He would like to be able to make sure that he can rebuild his home in the future if he would like, need to ever, and obviously, for home improvement loans and anything else on the property is conducive to that. If you recall, we did have some rezoning immediately to the west of this, along Locust, a little bit ago, and apparently, we didn't go quite far enough. So, we're covering those now. But we have a pattern right now already established essentially of R2 coming along Locust, given the nature of the existing lots and the pattern of development. This would kind of continue that a little bit. We didn't do the property to the north. It's mostly vacant currently, but potentially could be used for commercial at some point in time, so we didn't really touch that, but thought that the rezoning here made sense given the long-established pattern of residential on these properties. The variance that is being requested is really just to, again, allow him to rebuild it if something ever happened to it. And there you can see the homes and structures. The corner lot is a strange-shaped lot. Let me go back to the map here. You can see it's kind of an L lot, right? So, the garage is actually, technically, this Indiana is considered the front of that, so the garage is in the front, which is a little strange. And then, this lot here is actually the one that's really small. It's less than 2,000 square feet in area. So, the variance that's being requested is to, the only one that's really needed is for the front setback. The current structure is within seven and a half feet of the front lot line. The code requires it to be a 15-foot setback, so to be able to rebuild it, you would need a front yard variance. We just processed the variance on the gentleman who actually applied for the case. The other lots to be rebuilt would require some variances as well. We didn't include those in the public notifications, given the time that we had to do this. So, they would need to come back for variances if they, if something ever happens to the structure. They're obviously fine to be remaining as legal nonconforming in their current locations, but if they were to rebuild, they would need to come back in and get a variance for setback, for sure, and lot area on one of them, and we did provide that information in the packet just for reference for you guys. So, 429 East Locust would need a lot width variance, a corner side yard setback variance, and a rear yard setback variance to be compliant. And then, 410 Indiana would need similar width, front and interior side setbacks, as well as lot area and, no, lot area, basically. But we're not addressing those two. The only variance we're looking at really is the front yard setback on 443 East Locust because he was the applicant, and we had time to process that with the time that we had available to make this happen. So, that in a nutshell is the case. It's rezoning to R2, and then a variance for a front yard setback on 443 East Locust. When you guys are ready to act on those, I would do those separately, the variance from the rezoning.
Any questions? The public hearing is now open on this case. If anyone wants to come forward and speak on this case, you may do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, are you ready to act?
Yes. Deb Terrell. In case PB 2024-7-2, I would like to make a motion that we recommend approval of a map amendment to rezone 410 North Indiana, 429 East Locust, and 443 East Locust from C2 Service Commercial to R2 Single Family. And I would like to attach the following findings. Find my right page here. Okay. A, this map amendment would update the city's zoning map to better reflect the existing use of the property. Under B, the city's future use map identifies these properties as residential, not commercial. Therefore, the proposed map amendment would be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and land use recommendations. C, this request is compatible with existing uses and zoning classifications within the general area. D, the most appropriate zoning for these parcels at the time is residential. And E, as far as trends of development, new development in the area has been limited to new occupants and existing homes, so I think we're good there. And that's it.
Thank you. We have a motion by Deb Terrell.
Second. Chip Roarum.
Second by Chip Roarum. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Chip Roarum.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Susan Lopez.
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas.
Yes.
Stephen Case.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
That is recommended for approval.
Hey, the second is a major variance. Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion in case PB 2024-7-2, that the major variance from the front yard setback requirement at 443 East Locust be granted because the request is due to a specific and unique circumstance. The property in question can't yield a reasonable return if they can't rebuild or get insurance or sell it. The variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and won't alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The benefits of the variance would substantially outweigh any detriment, and the variance would not substantially impair the intent and purposes of our zoning ordinance or comprehensive plan.
Do we have a second?
Second, Steve Case.
We have a second by Steve Case. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Steve Case.
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas.
Yes.
Chip Roarum.
Yes.
Susan Lopez.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
That variance is granted.
Next case, PB 2024-7-3, a public hearing for a map amendment to rezone 756 through 784 North Evergreen Avenue, even addresses only. 757 through 791 North Evergreen Avenue, odd addresses only. 805 through 965 North Evergreen Avenue, odd addresses only. 760 through 770 North Rosewood Avenue, even addresses only. 806 through 838 North Rosewood Avenue, even addresses only. 751 through 767 North Wildwood Avenue, odd addresses only. 770 North Wildwood Avenue, 812 through 948 North Wildwood Avenue, even addresses only. 825 through 943 North Wildwood Avenue, odd addresses only. 745 through 797 East Willow Street, even addresses only. And 820 through 840 North Greenwood Avenue, even addresses only, from industrial or commercial to residential zoning.
See, he's the applicant on this one, too, so I will cover this. So, I've got up on the screen an aerial photograph of the area that we're talking about, generally outlined by this red line here, and you can see from that photograph that, you know, the area along Willow, you know, obviously, you've got the Caldwell AMI Zion Church here in this corner, but for the most part, it is residential. There are a couple of commercial uses along the Willow corridor. You've got the party house lounge, the stop-and-shop over here. You've got, we had a rezoning for this jab boxing a while ago that was in an old church that is active in there, but for the most part, this entire area is residential. Certainly, you've got commercial on the old facility off of Hobby here, and there's some industrial activity to the north of this, and you've got the railroad tracks here, but this area, for the most part, has been a residential neighborhood for a pretty long time. There are quite a number of vacant lots in this area. We were contacted by the owner of a property that's actually a vacant lot, right about where the H is in church on this aerial photograph. His name is Wesley Benz. He brought that property. He contacted our office, wanted to build a single-family home on the lot that's zoned industrial. So, we said, "Yeah, we can't really let you build a single-family home on that lot because that entire area is currently zoned industrial." Even though I would agree with you that it's probably a good spot for a house, we need to address the zoning issue. So, he did go ahead and apply to rezone his individual lot, but it seemed to us that if we're going to rezone his, we ought to look at that entire area and consider rezoning of quite a bit of it to make it consistent with the use of property that's been out there for years. It is not a great accessible location. It has already been essentially platted for single-family lots, even though it's zoned industrial, and so, to some extent, it's kind of ready to go for future residential development if people wanted to do it, and this gentleman was interested in doing that. He does live out of town. He's not in the immediate area, but he bought it for investment purposes and wants to build a home on it, and so, he asked for the rezoning. So, we did take a look at it. All the lots actually are large enough to be R1 zoning lots, for the most part. We do have a couple of two units in the area here that I'm pointing to now off of Willow, and there is the one apartment building down here that is also currently zoned commercial, as you see. So, that we're suggesting probably should be R3, since that is the category that's designed to accommodate multifamily use. But other than that, this is really kind of a cleanup of the zoning map to be consistent with the area the way it's historically developed and potentially could be redeveloped. I would say that if you drive through the area, there are some homes that need some work, and I can't guarantee that this is the case, but it's entirely possible that the reason there hasn't been some reinvestment in those is because it's legally nonconforming and you can't rebuild the thing, and so, they can't get a loan for home improvement because you can't rebuild it if something happened to it. So, I think this will potentially help to spur some investment in the area and be more consistent with the way the area has historically developed and give some flexibility to the property owners if they do seek to sell their property. The transaction will go much easier if it's zoned properly. So, for those reasons, we are suggesting the rezoning that is before you tonight.
I will go ahead and open up the public hearing, and if anyone is in the audience that has any questions or want to speak on this case, you may do so at this time. If you could come forward, please, and state your name. Hello. If you could state your name.
Kristy Davenport.
And if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, you may proceed.
I had a question about PB 2024-7-3. My question is, if it is changed to the residential zoning, can, can any, that means no business can exist in that area, like any stores or anything like that, or?
You could have a home occupation, but just to have, to only use the property for commercial use, then you couldn't, you could not do that.
Couldn't have all, okay. All righty, well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else, any other questions? Seeing that there are none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any questions, commissioners?
This is Steve Case. I have a question. If we look on page, just a question of a clarification about the map. If we look on page five, the image, the sort of the aerial photo that's outlined in red, I'm looking at the region that is, that is just to the northwest of that, that's not within that. It's just south of the railroad tracks. It looks like there's a lot with some trailers on it and things like that. Do you guys see what I'm talking about? If you go to the next page.
Yeah, let me go to that.
Page five.
Okay.
Right, so if we're, if we're looking just off to the, you know, the upper left, right, so just below the railroad track, there's that big lot that looks like it has maybe trailers and stuff, and then there's a little, a little spot to the south of that that's sort of coming down, that is, that is, yeah, so that's all outside of what we're talking about. That's all currently zoned residential? Am I, am I correct in interpreting this map correctly?
You're correct.
Okay. Any, I don't know, that just, that strikes me as odd. That would be the spot that I would have expected to have been industrial, or remained industrial, but it is currently residential.
That is correct.
Okay.
And yes, it is odd.
Are those Velstar trailers, Mike?
Yes, yes.
Mike, I got a question, so.
Barry McCracken.
Yeah, Barry McCracken, I'm sorry. Thank you. So, who's applying for this exactly?
So, Mr. Benz applied for his one individual lot, but seeing as how there was many lots in this area, the city is essentially the applicant on all the other lots, except for the one.
So, he's having to pay for the one?
No, he paid, well, he paid his application fee for his one lot. We actually handled all the locations for him.
Okay.
We being the city, not Tesco and so much.
Okay.
Just one additional question in regards to the comment that we got. This is Steve Case again. There's currently no businesses in the red area that we're talking about, correct?
Correct. That's why it's kind of jockeyed around a little bit, I guess, because we did keep anything that's currently a business as commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
We did, the only phone call that we got was really just kind of a clarification question. When you get a notice from the city, you're not used to that. You sometimes have questions, but we answered their questions and they were, seemed fine with it, so.
Are we ready to act?
Yes.
Okay.
In case number PB 2024-7-3, a request for a map amendment to rezone. Can I say that this is all this?
I've already read them, so you don't have to say them.
Yeah, yeah, previously mentioned properties.
Correct.
I move that we accept the request. And the standards used to evaluate these map amendments, the proposed map amendment is consistent spirit, purpose, and intent of this ordinance. And B, the proposed map amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the city's official comprehensive plan and in general conformity with the land use recommendations specified by said plan. Impatability with the existing uses and zoning classification of property within the general area of the subject property. D, the suitability of the subject property for the uses permitted under the proposed zoning classification, addressing the need for said map amendment. E, the trend of development, if any, in the general area of the subject property, including changes, if any, which have taken place since the day the property in question was placed in its present zoning classification, and the effect said map amendment would have on said trend. It also is an opportunity to generate opportunities for generational wealth within our community, which I feel is an important opportunity for us to endorse with this amendment.
We have a motion by Chip Roarum. We have a second.
I'd like to second, but Chip, with your permission, could we amend your motion to say recommend approval?
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying my language.
But I agree with you so much about reinvestment. I think this is an important first step.
Thanks.
So, we have a motion by Chip Roarum and a second by Deb Terrell. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Chip Roarum.
Yes.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Susan Lopez.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas.
Yes.
Stephen Case.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
Okay, it is recommended for approval.
Oh, business. Case PB 2024-4-3. A public hearing for a major subdivision for QuickTrip Corporation at Riverstone Parkway and Route 4552.
Okay, give me a second to get this up on the screen. There we go. Now, do that. Okay, here we go. Okay, we've had QuickTrip on the agenda for several meetings now. First for a annexation and rezoning, then for some, a conditional use for a billboard and a variance for a sign. This action is creating essentially two lots. It's combining all the lots that are currently along 4552 that were originally platted in the county into one, a larger lot to accommodate the proposed QuickTrip. And then it's creating a second lot back here where the existing convention center is and making one lot here that will eventually be dedicated to the city to begin renovation of that banquet hall into a viable facility again. The plan is to essentially take the parking lot that was back here for the convention center, and the city's going to need to build a new parking lot down here and reorient the banquet hall facility on this back lot right here. That transaction will occur once the city approves the site plan for the property. So really just, the map is a little confusing. Melissa and I were talking about this. They could have done more with line weights and things to make it a little bit cleaner and easier to understand. But really essentially what it's doing is creating a two-lot, combining lots and creating a two-lot subdivision. One lot for the QuickTrip at the corner of Riverstone Parkway and 4552, and the other lot back here for the convention center development that will be controlled by the city at, going forward. This has not received final engineering review, so if you are comfortable with it, I would suggest perhaps your recommendation be subject to any revisions requested by the city engineer or something like that. And we won't send it to city council until we have his comments. He said he should have them this week, but I just don't have them prior to this meeting. But really, this is just breaking it up, consolidating all the lots along 4552 and creating two lots to proceed with their development, so. That's what you got.
Any questions?
Can you, this is Steve Case. When it, the term dedicate, it will be, the lot will be dedicated to the city, does that mean it will be donated to the city? Can you?
Yes, the city entered a development agreement with QuickTrip. They did provide some TIF revenue incentives for the project, and we were in negotiation with them. There were some, a lot of complicating factors that I'd be happy to explain to you offline. But essentially, part of the deal was that the city's going to acquire the convention center, renovate it, then ultimately put it back on the market and sell it to a viable tenant. We don't want to be an operator of a facility long-term, but because it's in the TIF, we were probably the best prepared to take on that. The QuickTrip folks aren't in the convention banquet business, so they didn't really want to do that themselves. But they were cooperative in terms of understanding the city's desire to have that as a viable facility going forward. So the city is essentially stepping in to fix up the property and make it a viable facility again, and then we'll eventually sell it and to a viable operator.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll open up the public hearing in case there's someone who wants to speak on this case. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, what would you like to do with this case?
I have one more question. This was the property, we had folks from the neighborhood just to the north come several months ago, and they had talked about an issue with runoff and water, and they were worried about the storage facility that was, that was on the other nearby property.
Yeah.
Will this make any immediate change? I mean, when QuickTrip goes in, obviously there'll be changes to the parking lot, there'll be changes to the, to the, to the lot. Have, are, do we have any comments on that, on how it'll affect runoff and things of that nature?
Yeah, so through the site plan review process, we look at detailed engineering drawings. They are going to be providing a detention area roughly in this area of the site. They'll be designed to handle all of the runoff and store it on the property so that it has more than likely a lesser impact than it currently does on the adjacent property. So this actually should improve their drainage and reduce their flooding issues.
Thank you.
I will tell you also that Storage of America to the north of this, we've been reviewing their site plans and engineering. They've actually expanded their detention area to help alleviate some of the issues as well. So we're kind of working on it on both sides of their subdivision to help them out.
That's great. Thank you.
It might be worth noting, too, that that subdivision has had flooding problems long before anything was built there. So this could really help them.
Mike, could you show on the map, where is the retention area for QuickTrip going to go?
Generally in this area.
Okay. Is, is, I can't remember, is the detention that is proposed to the storage facility, is that close to that? Are they going to work together?
Now, the storage, let's see, do I have an air photo here? I don't have a good air photo. The, so the subdivision is essentially here. Storage of America's equivalent up here, and their detention is back here. So they're not touching.
Not close.
Not even close, really, yeah.
Excellent.
Madam Chairman, I'm ready to act.
Okay.
In case PB 2024-4-3 regarding the major subdivision of this property, I would like to move that we recommend approval. And I would like to attach the standards used here, and I'll read them because these are kind of, for a subdivision, this is kind of new stuff for me, so I'd like to go through it. Definite provisions have been made for public water supplies. Oh, these, these are preliminary approval standards. So regarding the fact that this will be subject to the recommendations and final approval of the city engineers, including definite provision made for public water supply system that's sufficient in terms of quantity, dependability, and quality to provide an appropriate supply of water for the type of subdivision proposed. That there's adequate provision made for public sewage system, and that such a system will comply with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations. That all areas of the proposed subdivision, which may involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards or requiring special precautions, be identified by the subdivider, and that the proposed uses of these areas are compatible with such conditions. All subject to engineering review. The subdivider has the financial ability to compete, to complete the proposed subdivision in accordance with all applicable federal, state, and local laws and regulations. They have adequate resources. The proposed subdivision will not result in the scattered subdivision of land that would leave undeveloped parcels of land lacking urban services between developed parcels. The subdivider has taken every effort to mitigate the impact of the proposed subdivision on public health, safety, and welfare.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Steve Case. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Steve Case.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Susan Lopez.
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas.
Yes.
Chip Roarum.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
Okay, that plat is recommended for approval, subject to engineering comments.
Case PB 2024-6-2. A public hearing for a conditional use permit for a restaurant drive-through and a major variance from the parking requirements at 344 through 352 West Court Street by Adam Bogner.
I do not see Mr. Baumgartner in the audience. I did. He originally requested that this case be continued from last month so that we could work on some language regarding the parking variance in particular. I sent him draft language, didn't really get any feedback. I sent him a copy of our staff report, didn't get a reply, so I'm a little surprised that he's not here right now. So I'm, if, I mean, I can present the case if you would like to, if you want to continue it. I guess we could do that as well, and we certainly want to see if anybody here is in the audience to speak to the case tonight. But it's essentially two items. It is, let me go to the site plan real quick and highlight it for you. It is, oh, I gotta flip this, hang on one second. There we go. Court Street and Third Avenue is the property. Right now, there's an existing building on the west side of the alley. The rest of the lot is vacant. His plan is to tear down that existing building, use some of that space for parking. While this says alley to be vacated, the alley will not be vacated, but the city's okay with allowing to continue to go through and having parking on this side. What he wants to do is develop a 32,048 square foot building. He would like to have two, potentially two restaurant uses in the building. Specific tenants have not been identified yet. He would like to have a drive-through for one of those tenants. He has mentioned likely a coffee shop. Don't know which one is part of the space, and he would like a drive-through for that. And then in terms of parking, restaurant uses require 10 spaces per thousand. He doesn't have enough site to do that. Is difficult, admittedly, to do on smaller lots like this in urban settings to have that much available parking that a restaurant would require. So our suggestion in the, regarding the variance, was to grant the variance, but have a stipulation that you could have either one restaurant and a retail use, because retail uses don't require that much parking, or if there are two restaurant uses, they need to have off-peak hours. So a place that would be busy at breakfast and another one that might be busy at lunch, but you don't want two that are busy at lunchtime, otherwise you might have some parking issues. I talked to him about that concept a little bit. He seemed okay with the concept, but I don't have his confirmation that he's specifically okay with the language at this point in time, so. That's where we are on this one.
It's my feeling that we should table this. We've granted an awful lot of requests, and there's nothing happening with any of those. So I'm not really comfortable with granting another batch of requests.
Mm-hmm.
Especially since he's not here to explain.
Yeah.
So my, my thought would be that we should table it.
Yeah. I'm absolutely fine with that, Deb. The only suggestion is in case anybody just wanted to provide comment, let them do it, but.
Okay, open the public hearing.
Right, before we vote one way or the other, I'll open up the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this case, you may do so at this time. Seeing that there is none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Is that your motion?
Well, do you want to close it, or do you want to continue it to the next meeting?
We will continue it. And if I can get a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Deb Terrell and a second by Chip Roarum. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Chip Roarum.
Yes.
Susan Lopez.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Jose Arturo Barajas.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
Steve Case.
Yes.
And that item will be tabled till next month.
Any other business?
We will likely have for next month, a couple of sign variance cases. We will have some rezoning, some additional lots in town, that some of you are familiar with. And whatever else comes in.
All right. Any other business? Motion to adjourn? Did I hear a motion or not?
Yes.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. Before you leave, though, I do want to talk to you.
For, for the court reporter's record, I guess, Arthur Lacks did come in probably five, 10 minutes ago, so he is in attendance. So there you go.
Welcome, Mr. Lacks. Deb.
Yeah, I'm staying here.
Okay.
I'll listen.